To order. And first of all, if you would like to stand and join us in the pledge or however you do it from home, please, please do so as we begin our meeting with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America into the Republic where religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Hi Brenda.
Hi.
We'll take a poll of the attendees to make sure we're all here, but we know we are. Please, please respond with a yay or a present or whatever. Bob, present. Brenda?
Present.
Anna?
Present.
Katie?
Present.
Bill?
Here.
Rebecca?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Approving of the agenda. Mr. Sampson, do you have anything extra or in addition to that we need to discuss?
No, not on my end. We should be good for the agenda.
Not on mine as well. So I would need a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
A move.
Moved by Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Katie, was that you?
No.
Rebecca.
That was, that was me. That was Rebecca.
I go up and down on my screen of attendees. So thank you Rebecca. Any other discussion? Yes vote would be for the approval of the agenda. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie? Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. Just a reminder for anyone who's, who's listening to our meeting and has their microphone on, please, please turn off your cell phone to give us an opportunity to have our meeting without issue, I guess. So just a reminder. Okay, we have no scheduled presenters, reports and communication. Cresson, are you here?
I am.
Hi Cresson, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Tell me, what's new, what's going on with school right now?
School, we're back to hybrid, which is very nice. I know I'm personally enjoying it quite a bit. And sports and activities are going. So we have both basketball teams going. The boys are three and four right now, so rooting for them to keep winning and doing good. And we have wrestling going and speech is going. They just got third at our home tournament this weekend, but I think we probably could have done better, but we never take first. Don't tell anybody. And yeah, that's about what I got.
So tell me a little bit about speech. We, how many teams participated here?
I don't quite know the exact number of teams, but there was about roughly thirty or less entries per category in our thirteen categories. So, yeah. Our speech team's the smallest this year that has been in quite a few years, but that's because it's all online and different, so.
And how many do we have out or?
I think we have around thirty on our speech team this year.
Okay, thirty is what you said, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Anything more for us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you and stay with us just in case we need a student opinion on anything, please.
Okay.
School board committee reports. Does anyone have a, one of our standing committees that has met and would like to share with us what went down at their meeting?
This is Brenda. We had a staff development meeting today.
Okay.
At three fifteen. And that was my first meeting I've attended, so it was very informational. They went through some of the topics that they have been talking about in the professional learning, PLCs. And the mentor program. We've been meeting one-on-one with new teachers and check-ins with new staff. And that's been going well in both elementary and high school. They've had what they call win or what I need sessions where they work on, teachers can talk about the things that they would need or like to have for professional development. One of the topics was for the elementary was empathy versus sympathy was one of the topics that they talked about. And Kay Sabans, we're doing peer evaluations. She's got about two-thirds of those done. Those are going very well and then expects to have the rest done by next month. They're planning ahead for the next PLCs will be coming up in March. Well, no, I'm sorry. The next professional development meeting would be coming up in March. And planning for workshop week next fall. And some of the contingencies as to whether they'd be meeting in person or virtually trying to kind of plan for that. And the budget and various different things. So it's a very informative meeting and a lot was accomplished. Any questions about that?
I don't think you were busy. Any questions?
You're the ones who are busy.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, administrative board reports. There are additions in your packet, elementary board report. Jen, would you like to comment on anything?
Jen had to pull out at the last minute here. She had something that came up. So I will take any questions back to Jen and she can maybe respond to you individually if you guys have questions.
Nothing? Okay. Middle, high school and technology. Tim, are you with us?
Tim is out as well.
Yeah.
He's out on leave.
Please refer to the, the reports that they've given us at each level. Next, next up would be Reed?
I'm here.
Hi Reed.
Hi everybody. Good evening. First, just like to thank Cresson for an awesome summary of everything that's been going on in athletics and activities. She nailed that well. Saturday was a busy day for us. We had some, we had our first home HBL dance competition. And that was my first real experience of dance, although I continue to hear that that's a very, a different experience from a traditional year. I was anticipated and I was ready for the passion. I was not ready for the amount of intensity that our fan and our coaches had. There were some BDT chants. That was, I mean, it was just, it was neat. It was cool. And, and it was very exciting. I was very pleased with that. We also had the speech and Cresson was, I checked in with Cal and Holly there in the, right around noon time. And Cal said surprisingly, went surprisingly well for, I think we had over three hundred participants. And then everybody kind of virtually made it to where they needed to go so that it went as well as could be expected. Other than that, just based off the report that I gave you, I've been working on, you know, rescheduling based off whether the opponents scheduled can play or not on the uniform rotation. I think we've got a pretty good plan here. Ready to move forward with that. And then just more meetings. And our third or fourth community advisory meeting is this coming Thursday.
How were the, how was CE doing at this point in time? Certainly that's a.
We're getting a few more interest here going into the springtime. Everybody's been just kind of a hold off and wait and see what they can do versus what we can't do. So we do have a little bit more interest virtually. But been pretty quiet.
Okay, Dave, do you have anything for us? Operations maintenance?
Nothing real new to be honest with you. Nothing new to report. I just got Mr. Olson keeping me on my toes. I'm trying to keep up with him.
Did you add a couple staff to your, your, your group?
Yeah, we have a, yeah, I thought I mentioned that last time, but we have a couple new staff. We've been doing some training. Seems to be going well. So, you know, it's kind of a good time to have new staff involved because we can break them in a little easy because typically this time of the year, we would just be crazy busy. And so it's a good opportunity for these, these new employees to come in kind of, kind of easy, but it's going well.
Yeah, I knew that we added them, I think, at the last meeting, but it's always good to see how things are going.
And they're still here.
Yeah, that was my second. Okay. Moving down, any questions for Dave, by the way? Superintendent's report. Mr. Sampson?
Yes, besides the action items that I had some comments on, I just want to give an update on community vaccination and staff vaccinations. As far as the community vaccinations, as most of you know, we've been in talks with Goodyear County to use our field house on Fridays and we had our first one actually last Friday. We were able to get that scheduled. We do have the agreement coming up later here in the, in the agenda, but that went over really well that day to get a bunch of healthcare personnel and senior citizens vaccinated with their first shots. And some of them were having their second shots as well. So we were very happy that we could help be a part of the team with the vaccinations throughout the state going on currently. As far as staff vaccinations, as most of you know, we had the statewide signup with MDE. And then also there's a second road, if you will. Goodyear County is supplying us with extra vaccines that they come up with on a weekly basis. And so at the last minute, we've been trying to notify as many staff as possible, depending on how many slots Cannon Falls has been offered. And I would say at this point, we are somewhere between a third and a half of our staff in getting offered at least the first round of shots. And some of them should be coming up on their second round of shots also as well. So it's been a positive kind of enlightening process that our admin team has been working through. But I think it further brightens the light at the end of the tunnel, I think, which is good to see.
Any questions for Jeff?
I have a question for you Jeff.
Yes.
Just wondering if there's any talk of, if there's a plan or anything in place for our kids ever all being back in school for like high school, middle school at all for coming up here? Because I know other districts have some plans in place or some dates that they're shooting for. I was just wondering if we have anything like that, that we're looking at.
We've been talking about it administratively and there are different variables that go into that decision. At this point. Probably the biggest hurdle that we would have to get over is if we would put all of our kids back into the high school. The, the block scheduling at this point as it was created with larger class sizes. And then we would split them in half so that they were more easily managed. Getting around the social distancing by bringing them all back in, because if we bring them all back in, I still believe that we have to comply with three feet of social distancing. And, and that's been a pretty big hurdle at this point to talk about that. But that doesn't mean that we're going to stop talking about it and looking at different ways of accomplishing that. That's just one of the, the first hurdles that we have to get over is if we do come back in person, we still have to be within three feet of each other. And still provide room for the staff members as well in the classroom.
Okay.
There are others that probably have the same dilemmas. Are you in conversation with other soup's and other administrators to see how they're doing some things so we can see what fits us or?
Yeah, yeah. And I would say most of them are struggling, especially in the high school around that hybrid schedule and what that means to bring them back all in at once and with social distancing. And obviously not all buildings are designed the same with the same square footage in classrooms. And so that can present a challenge to some schools as well.
Anything else? Okay, let's step into public input. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may address, may not address criticism toward any individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with administrators and or the superintendent. Comments from visitors should be informational in nature and not exceed, exceed three to five minutes per issue. Does anyone in our community wish to speak to the board about anything pertaining to the district? Okay, we're moving down. Action items, we have no old business. Under new business, consideration to submit review and comment doc to MDE for approval. Jeff, you're going to have to first remind me what review and comment is.
Review and comment is part of a process for bonds that MDE needs to review projects that are slated to go before the public for vote. And then comment on any pieces that they see that need shoring up. And so this document is due this Wednesday up at MDE. And this is really part of the election process and deadlines that are set forth in statute. So first, the first part of that is to submit this document. And I think it's about a hundred and fourteen pages of information on a project that we are going out to bond for, or at least ask the public to bond for. All that information is stuff that we have talked about, discussed and passed from, you know, up to this point, I guess, is the best way to say it. And so really what I'm looking forward tonight from the board is just the permission to go ahead and submit it to MDE. We've been working with Ellers Financial, who's our financial partners for the school district. And they are on the call or on the Zoom tonight. And also ISG, who has been our partners along the way in this facilities process. And so if you have questions in regards to this document, they should be able to help us. But it shouldn't really be anything new to anybody, especially on the board at this point.
More of a procedural thing that we need to comply with in order to keep moving forward.
Yep. It's the first deadline for the, to keep us on cycle for the election.
Yep. If possible, let's, let's get a motion in a second and then we can get into discussion as, as you deem necessary.
Make the motion.
Motion by Brenda for approval. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
A second. Katie?
Thank you Katie. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor to, to submit the review and comment doc to MDE. A yes vote would be to, to submit. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes, that passes by a six zero vote. Okay, item two, consideration to prove the first reading of the draft resolution in ballot language for the May eleventh, twenty twenty-one election. Jeff?
Yes, the resolution to officially move forward with the election. We need to come through resolution. And also attached in that resolution is the ballot language for the proposed May eleventh election. Tonight would be the first reading and if any of you see any concerns with the reading of the draft resolution or the ballot language, this would be a good time to bring that up because those are due on, I believe, the twenty-sixth of this month. I gotta look at my calendar to make sure. Yeah, so we have a board meeting on the twenty-second. And it's due later that week. And so we would bring the final resolution in ballot language to the meeting on the twenty-second for your final approval. This resolution was drafted with help from Ellers and our bond attorney, Dorsey Wilson. So it has passed through legal as well.
Do I hear a motion to approve and that would, we'd follow it up with discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Katie?
Thank you Katie. Second?
I'll second Rebecca.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Clerk, this is a resolution.
I can not get this one to print for me. Could you pull it? There you go.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I gotta find it here. There it is.
I have the other one printed, but I couldn't get this one to print for me. All right. All right. Resolution relating to determining the necessity of approving a capital project levy authorization and issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon. I, do I? Is that enough? Okay.
That's just.
That's just for the clerk, right? Yeah.
And really, there's only a first reading. And so.
Right. All right, let me see here.
The ballot language is further down this document if you wish to use.
Want me to read that?
Yeah, we can take a look at. Yeah, so the, the first question on the ballot here, if you can see my cursor.
Yep.
That is considered ballot one and that would be for the tech levy, capital project levy question.
So does she want to read the?
Do you want me to read those or?
You don't have to. I mean, I suppose you can if you. Yep.
That it's the first draft or the first reading?
Yep.
Okay. So do you want me to do roll call?
Yes, you'll have to do roll call.
Okay.
We can do roll call. And then, so did you want to read question one or do you want me to just kind of slowly scroll through?
I can read them.
Okay.
Um, the question on the approval of the capital project levy authorization shall be school district question one on the school district ballot at the, at the special election held to approve said authorization. So that would be the issue general obligation school building bonds of the school district in an aggregate amount not to exceed ten, ten million, is it? Oh gosh, here go. Ten million, four hundred and fifty thousand for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities pursuant to Minnesota statutes, chapter four hundred and seventy-five. The question on the approval of the issuance of the above referenced bonds shall be school district question number two on the school district ballot at the special election held to approve said authorization. Issue general obligation school building bonds of the school district in an aggregate amount not to exceed one million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to renovations and updates to the district gymnasiums and outdoor athletic facilities and sites pursuant to Minnesota statutes, chapter four seventy-five. The question on the approval of the issuance of the above referenced bonds shall be school district question three on the school district ballot at the special election held to approve said authorization. The passage of school district question three shall be contingent on the passage of school district question two. So issue general obligation, school building bonds for the, of the school district in an aggregate amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-five thousand for acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including but not limited to acquisition and installment of artificial turf to the district stadium field pursuant to Minnesota statutes, chapter four seventy-five. There's a, and then the fourth.
Yeah, so the fourth question is, they number the questions after you read them.
Gotcha.
Resolution. And so that was actually question number four. And so what happens is question number one is the capital projects tech levy. Question number two is going to be the larger building bond. And then question number three is going to be the next smaller size building bond. And question number four is going to be the smallest one. And question number three cannot pass without question number two passing. And then question number four cannot pass without questions two, three passing.
Okay.
If that makes sense to board members.
Okay, any discussion questions that board needs clarified? Okay, if not, I would look for roll call vote.
All right, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie, yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Presentation by pre-referendum companies ISG and Crowe Sanderson. Jeff, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, as we are going through this process at some point, and we talked a little bit about it last meeting, we talked about how to get information out prescriptively to the voting public on this project. And what schools do is they engage with pre-referendum companies to help with marketing and promoting of the information for the building bonds. And I've invited two companies here tonight. One of them is ISG that we have some relationship with. They offer pre-referendum services. And the other one is Crowe Sanderson, which is a construction management company. If our bond is luckily enough to pass, we will need to engage with an architectural mechanical company and also a construction management company, which is, that's coming down the line here in the next month or two. We will be talking with some companies about what you would want to feel comfortable with engaging with if the bond does pass so that we can hit the ground running. So the first company that's going to talk about their pre-referendum services tonight is ISG. And then at some point, hopefully soon, Crowe Sanderson representatives will be in the waiting room. And then I will ask ISG to step out of the meeting once they are finished. And then I will let in the Crowe Sanderson representatives into the meeting to do their presentation as well. So any questions about that? Okay, and I believe Paul Youngquist, Justin Steffel, Laura Drager and Kevin Hildebrandt are here tonight from ISG.
We are. Can you hear me? Can you hear me Jeff?
Yep.
Oh, that's okay. Good evening. This is Paul Youngquist. I'm the lead architect on the ISG team. Laura's going to put, share the screen here. How do we make that happen Jeff?
Well, I think I gotta allow Laura to do that. Hang on. I gotta find Laura.
Yep. Okay, I just hit share screen. Let me know if it's going to let me.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, there we go. Okay, we're, I know that you're focusing on pre-referendum planning, but it, it, it's kind of tough to just talk about that when we're architects and engineers and we've been doing your assessment work for you. And we certainly would hope to be following it all the way through to the very end and making sure that things are done right. But yeah, I'll start. Paul Youngquist, the lead architect for the ISG team. And it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I've served about forty-seven different school districts in Minnesota and worked with a hundred and three different superintendents. Many, many boards, many staff members, lots of communities and contractors. And my strength is working with school employees and, and others to identify the facility needs based on curriculum enrollment and the current status of your building. With me then is Kevin Hildebrandt, Hildebrandt, and he's former facilities director at Fairbough Schools. And his strength is in assessing the condition of a school facilities, specifically all the maintenance issues. And obviously, those are the reasons he's on our team here for your specific project. Also with me is John, Justin Steffel. And Justin, this is our project manager. And Justin's in charge of making sure that we take all the right steps and we follow all the right schedule to require to lead us all to a very successful project. The fourth person, a very critical person at this stage of the game is Laura Drager. And she's our marketing manager, but her strengths are communication. And the obvious connection here is her ability to understand how to talk to a community and how to. how to talk to a community and how to engage them in understanding your needs and where we go. There's a just want to touch a little bit on a little larger group of people. And the next slide will show kind of an organizational chart, just and most of you probably fully understand what the construction industry is all about. But sometimes it's helpful just to run it through it here. Three entities, the owner, that's you folks, you're the board serving the community. You've hired the superintendent, he's hired the buildings and grounds, business manager and lots of people. And then there's the design and drawing it up team. And that's the ISG group. And we're the ones that identify your needs, review them with them, help you prioritize them. But at some point in time, we'd actually end up calculating the size of beams and columns and the amount of ductwork and and how much power has got to go to every place and whether or not we're going to have to move some dirt and this kind of things. And that's the engineers and the architects. And then the green side there, that's the builders. It's just fine to draw it up all up and put it out for bids, but somebody's going to have to build it. And every construction team includes someone that's called a project manager that takes care of scheduling and and ordering of materials and helping to identify materials and and prices and things. And then there's a site superintendent, the job soup that is on the job site and organizes all the construction, all the subcontractors as they show up on the job and they they're told what to do. Then there's all the subcontractors, someone moving all the dirt work, someone doing the concrete and the steel and the masonry. And there's about thirty to forty different subcontractors here. And the reason I put this chart on the on the out there tonight is years ago, we used to just always do a just have a general contractor and you'd do some drawings and plans and blueprints and such, and you put it out to a general contractor. And that general contractor would have a project manager, they'd have a job site superintendent, and then they'd go out and privately get all kinds of bids for excavation and concrete and such. Well, it became apparent years ago, maybe twenty years ago now, but that it was really be helpful if that project manager and the job site superintendent were around earlier in the job to kind of become part of the planning team. Planning team with the architect and engineers to help identify some of the materials that are available, some of the scheduling, some of the costs that we might be running into. And we discovered that if we hired somebody called a construction manager, that's who this that dotted line is. They bring to the table the project manager and the job soup. And and they're there right away, day one, and we're all working together to put together the right project for you. And that dotted line is actually Crowe Sanderson and any construction manager. And once the project is identified, then we all go out and we get public bids for excavation and public bids for concrete and public for steel and so forth. But just wanted to kind of know, maybe make sure you knew that we aren't competing with Crowe Sanderson tonight. We're actually presenting a situation where it's a very, very proven track record of two groups. So one group, an architect and engineers, and the other group, a construction manager that have worked on many, many, many projects together, literally with each other and very, very successful. Just a final note before we leave this chart about the architect and the engineers. You know, there's a lot. You can go get lots of architects and engineers that can calculate beams and columns and come up with the right size ductwork and the right size air handling unit and all this and that. But we really do have a passion for working with schools. It's very, very special. Sometimes we do warehouses and that's fine. You can put up a big box and store stuff in it. But if you're doing a building where it has an effect on kids and effect on how teachers work and how communities look at the building, it's really a big deal. It's really a big deal to us. And over the years, I've I've taken over 350 hours of continuing ed that's just focused on education. And not that I'm trying to be a teacher or a principal or an administrator such, but we sure do want to try to understand what you're going through every day. How do kids learn? What are teachers? What do teachers need? How do administrators deal with problems and still have the energy left over to take districts to the next level and so forth? And how do we all relate to a community? Well, there's a kind of a saying that goes architectures, the physical expression of the values and abilities of everyone involved in a project. Well, we try to maximize our abilities, but through a lot of extra effort, we try to understand and adopt your values. With that, I think Justin and Laura should talk about where we've been and where we might go.
Okay, thanks, Paul. This is Justin Steffel with ISG. I was on on the meeting with you folks, January 25th, you know, talking a little bit about that review and comment. But we wanted to show you a little bit of of, you know, how the pre referendum planning fits into the overall project schedule or process, if you will. So kind of starting on that graph on the upper left hand side, you know, ISG. We we came to your your school in August and we interviewed against a couple other firms. And I believe at that point, it was the facilities committee that selected us to complete the next step, which is the facility assessment. And that's where we had our mechanical engineers and architects actually walk through your building and come up with all those priorities and come up with the cost. So we had once we had that done, we then identified and prioritized those deficiencies and then continued to work with and furthered the priorities with the facilities committee. And then once, once those are identified, we did work with your survey company and, you know, questions were put out and we got that information back. And, you know, here we are tonight approving the review and comment, which, you know, you guys passed, you guys asked us to put that together last two weeks ago, last board meeting. And we had internal staff put that together. And usually those usually those can take three, four weeks to put together. We turned that around in a month and a half by a lot of really, really good help from Jeff and staff at the district. The next step, which is what we're talking about tonight, is the pre referendum planning. You can see it's 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 really one step of the journey, but it's one of the most important important steps, of course, because we need to talk to the community and have them help us with this process. This is the this is the point in time, too, when as Paul was talking about, we feel it is beneficial to start working with the construction manager and kind of become a team and couple our services and give you the best opportunity to pass that referendum. A May 11 vote, if we can pass that, there's many additional steps to design and construction. In the architect engineers world, we have what we call three different steps, schematic design, design development and construction documents. And then we ultimately go to bid, as Paul was talking about, and we get contractors to do the work. During that schematic design, design development and construction document process, those very same mechanical, electrical engineers and architects that walked through your buildings back in September of 2020 would be the actual folks doing the design of the plans, you know, the mechanical system. So we we feel it's very important to have that consistency throughout the entire process. So Laura, if you want to flip to the next slide.
Yeah, you bet. So yeah, so this is Laura Drager. I'm the marketing manager at ISG, like Paul mentioned. I'm very fortunate to be able to work on a team of about fourteen marketers that include graphic designers, videographers, content writers, all that kind of pulled together to help with the referendum process. So I'm going to jump into just what some of those pre referendum services look like and how we've found success. So this first slide here talks a little bit about kind of kicking off a pre referendum before you obviously jump into creating the brochures and the handouts and the videos. It's important to first establish the basics and what exactly we want to communicate to the community and who those target audiences are. There's a ton of different information surrounding a bond vote, so establishing these kind of key three things right at the beginning make a huge difference and kind of gets everybody on the same page. So like I said, jumping into the audience. We work usually with the district and whoever the committees are at that time to kind of walk through this exercise to identify the key target audiences. As you guys know, there's tons of different audiences that all kind of gravitate towards different key messages and what they want to hear and what they want to know the facts about. So I kind of identifying them upfront, what's what the what they're looking for from that messaging, just so that, again, everybody's on the same page. Ways we can build trust, who the main influencers are within those groups. Those are all just important pieces to identify right at the beginning. And we work with you guys to make sure everybody is on the same page and who those audiences are. And then that kind of just ties into telling the story. Like I mentioned, there's many different audiences and there's many different parts of the messaging that they're going to want to see. It might be the tax information. It might be, well, where exactly is my money going to go? What? How is this going to benefit the students? So we really want to lay out that story on what the district's needs are in a very easy to understand, kind of comprehensive plan essentially, and then use those kind of nuggets of information to to, again, go towards those different audiences throughout that timeline. There's not definitely not a one size fits all messaging component, so we want to make sure we identify everything. Everything needs to be fact based and positive. I think that's the one of the bigger keys to reaching everyone is we don't want to be biased. We don't want to influence. We want to just present the facts and encourage people to go out and vote. That's a that's a big, a key piece. So rolling in the audience, trying to tell that story and identifying what's important to each of those audiences. And then it's really important, on the other hand, too, is to just come up with a timeline. Starting honestly tomorrow through May 11th, there's everything from the planning and alignment to making sure we're, again, telling that positive story and planning for the future. The initial education, not sending everything we absolutely have and learn to the public right away. It's there's kind of an initial education. And then we kind of listen, what are people saying? What are we hearing? Educating, engaging a little bit further. And then there's a point of really heavy engagement and direct connection, whether that's through mailers information online, maybe that's boots on the ground, the school board and facilities committee going out and speaking to organizations. And then there's all the way through the post referendum engagement. Like Justin and Paul both said, we kind of started this process with you guys way back in August 2020, and we're not just gonna, yep, May 11th, see you later. It's kind of rolls in and everything kind of culminates together all the way through that design stage and into construction. Then, like I said, it kind of those upfront key pieces to kick off the referendum. And then we kind of move into, so how do we actually tell that story? What are the, what's our toolbox look like on how we're hitting the community? So ISG can put together a ton of different types of deliverables and every district is unique and how you're reaching those audiences. We did identify a few, the ones in red here that we thought would work well for for Cannon Falls and what that looks like, especially when it comes to responding to COVID and maybe people not being as responsive to in person events. So a couple of those things include drone flyovers, visualization rendering videos. We can interview teachers and put together a video that talks about, here's the need, this is why we want you to go out and vote. Walking tours, we can do a basically a walking tour of the school, a 360 that we can send out to individuals and they can walk through the school online. And then it pops up a video or excuse me, a text box that says, in this part of the school, this is what we want to improve, whether it's the HVAC or a hallway, whatever the case. And kind of help them walk through to see, identify the needs, basically. This stage, like I said, just kind of expands on that a little bit more and gives you some examples on what that looks like. I do have a video and a walkthrough example. I won't jump into those right now, just because I want to be conscious of time, but definitely open to sharing those, whether it's after the meeting as a follow up or if we do have time at the end here. So can definitely give you some examples of a few of those deliverables as well. Oh, that's not what we meant to do. There we go.
Okay, Laura, thanks, Laura. We wanted to share a couple, a couple of examples with you, with you folks tonight on some recent projects. Projects that we did work with Carlos Anderson on and projects that went to referendum. And this first one here is the Salford School District. And we finished up construction on this project a little less than a year ago. It was about an $18 million bond, and we went for a 2017 referendum. It's it's pretty comparable to your project. We did a lot of HVAC work and a lot of indoor air quality work. We just thought this was a good, good project to share with you. And we also did site work, you know, beyond the HVAC, we did site work around the interior, and we did some exterior brick tuck pointing, some re roofing. So it was a comparable project. And you can see on the bottom, there's a part of the science room, kind of C T key portions of the building. The next project is a little bit closer to where you guys are located, which is the Red Wing Public School. And we did this over two summers. The summer of 2017 and the summer of 2018, we had roughly $23 million of deferred maintenance work that they had across their high school, middle school, two elementary schools and a family center. So we really touched almost all their buildings there. And they had a long laundry list of just kind of random maintenance items that needed to be completed, including a lot of HVAC work, fire sprinkling, electric electrical upgrades, boiler work, tuck pointing, re roofing. So I think based on what you guys have on your list, this is probably one of the most comparable projects and pretty close by. And again, another project we worked with Carlos Anderson being the construction manager. The next project is just wanted to kind of show you, it's probably not as comparable, but I wanted to show you you know, what we can do to. This is a project that we also worked with Carlos Anderson on in St. Peter, Minnesota, and this is their new high school. And I think the part that is comparable is we did a lot of exterior work in their athletic fields. We the school district teamed up with the city and they actually bought property together. And we had multiple practice fields, baseball softball field. So a lot of exterior work that would be a little bit comparable to some of the things you're talking about doing with your stadium and lighting, et cetera. And then kind of moving along. Kevin, I don't know if you wanted to take these or you wanted me to take these. So this is the Albert Lee Hammer Complex. You can see, you can see the synthetic turf in the track. And so we do have a lot of experience with synthetic turf projects, track projects. So just wanted to give you a couple, a couple of examples of some things you've been working on recently. And then the next one is the Fairbolt Soccer Complex. If you're at all familiar with that, that was a very successful project in community of Fairbolt and provided a lot of design and assistance in their soccer field program. And just some some pretty pictures of some schoolwork. Upper, upper right hand corner is actually a school in Fort Dodge, Iowa. And then bottom left, maybe a little closer to home, not too close, is Pipestone. Pipestone is under construction right now, and that is slated to open this summer. So we did, we did want to be respectful of your time. We realized this is a, this is a board meeting and you guys have a lot of other good business to get to. As Laura said, we do have a video of you know, a video that we had put together for a previous project, helping them with their pre referendum. So I guess, you know, with that, we can open up questions. Jeff, if you think we have enough time for the video, we could play it. If we don't, we could sure send the video out link to we could send a link out to you later, Jeff, and you could share with the board members later if you would like.
How long, how long is the video, Justin?
I'll ask Laura, do you know?
It's about two and a half minutes.
Board members, you guys want to take a quick peek at it?
Sure.
Okay. If you can go back to that, that would be fine.
You bet.
Can I ask a question as we're teeing that up? You know, it's probably for Justin, you since you went through the program. You know, you you brought up Red Wing and I forget the other school. They were considerable similar projects. So can you tell me, you know, what we're doing in comparison to those two projects and the age of those buildings compared to us?
Sure. Sure. Well, the I think the Salford Schools would be very comparable in ages. They had they had multiple additions. I think their centric area, their building was done in the 60s, 70s. I think their elementary wing was done maybe in the 50s. So they were really 50s, 60s. As far as Red Wing Schools, Red Wing Schools, the high school, of course, is fairly new. They're Their their middle school is a little, a little bit older. So I think, I think they're kind of, you know, besides maybe the high school at Red Wing, I think they're, they're right in kind of that same vintage. The elementary school, one of them, I think Burnside's a little bit newer. Family Center in Colville, which is in downtown Red, Red Wing is, I think that was in the maybe 40s or 50s. So, but, but regardless, we, we, we I mean, we deal with a plethora of different ages. I mean, it's, it's super common to work with a district and the building's been added on six or seven times. And it, you know, it started probably back in the 20s with the original core of the building. And then, you know, maybe they tore something off and then they added something in the 40s and then, you know, 60s, 70s. So, so we're accustomed to working on all different vintages.
Yeah, I guess my question is really around kind of the need for HVAC upgrades and air ventilation. Is it sort of timing on the age or is that kind of where we're at with, you know, dealing with safety and security in schools today?
Yeah, I mean, the HVAC component is, I mean, is not uncommon at all. Especially for that area of the building, we're talking about upgrading for years. I mean, it's a very common issue, you know, unit ventilators that, and the mechanisms in the unit ventilators are starting to fail. And, you know, that, that's what we're doing for almost every school that ends up doing a referendum is replacing that equipment.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
We could just, sorry, it took so long to get there.
If we could just piggyback on that just a bit. We did some, I thought HVAC work with UNESCO. Oh gosh, it's been five or six years ago, I guess. And I'm, I'm trying to remember what they did for us relative to what the need is today. And maybe Dave can comment on that since you were here at the time. Dave Peterson?
Yeah, you bet, Bob. Well, you know, we, going back to that project, we really went through a very similar process of what we're doing right now, really assessing what the needs are throughout the buildings. And, you know, a big part of that is not only assessing it, but putting the project together. But time has a big, big factor on how much work you can get done. And of course, how much money you can spend. So when we put that project together and we took care of a lot of the HVAC, you know, we kind of had to make a priority list, but we also had an alternate. And it was all determined by when it went out to bid on what we'd be able to do. And then once those numbers come back from bid, at that point, we can determine, okay, we can go ahead with maybe one of these alternates or two of them. And so a lot of it has to do with the bidding process and what the numbers come in at. So the, you know, the part that we're talking about right now with the unit ventilators, we did do some upgrades to those. I mean, we converted them from steam to hot water and did some reprogramming and cleaned them up and got them working the best that we possibly could. And they were at about half-life at that point. So we really had to prioritize at that point. You know, do we put funds elsewhere, which we actually did. We put a lot of the funds into the community center. We did some HVAC over there and did some lighting and some roofing over there. Just because we weren't going to have enough money and time to be able to go through all the UN events. But they were at about half-life. So we still had life out of them. You know, we're talking five, six years later. And, you know, they're starting to get up there in age and we're getting to the point of where you know, this is something that we really need to look at. But, you know, the last project, we got everything done that we wanted to get done. It was just a matter of what the dollar amount came in at, how much time we had and we had to prioritize from there.
When, when you meet with folks back in September with the facility group and with the ISG group, I would guess. You talk about deficiencies going through the building now. Is that what we're doing right now or is that what you were doing back then is prioritizing what the greatest need for the district is? Much the same as we did with that UNESCO project?
That's exactly what we're doing. You know, and there's different needs because we're five, six years later down the road. So more needs arise and it depends on usage, weather, you know, climate. What hasn't been done from tuck pointing to maybe some excavation and things like that. So, you know, as time goes on, different needs arise and, and here we are looking at what those needs are and, and trying to prioritize, you know, between what we know as a district and working with ISG and, and everyone they're working with. Not only addressing those needs, but getting the most bang for our buck and getting as much quality work done as we possibly can for the district.
And I think, you know, if I could, Justin here with ISG again, to kind of tie that together a little bit for you. I'm not sure exactly how you did the process with UNESCO the last time. But, you know, we did talk about how it is advantageous, and Paul started with it at the beginning of the presentation. And advantageous to have the construction manager on board earlier is so that they can work with the architect and you can, you know, hone in those costs. So that when you do get to bidding, you know where the costs are going to come in and you know what work you can get done. And you don't get to the bidding and have to, you know, kind of not do some of the work, if you will. So maybe that kind of ties some of that together a little bit. And then additionally, like I was saying, in the history, the mechanical, electrical engineers and the architects that actually did the facility assessment themselves would be the same people designing the new systems. So we think that's, we think that's very important in a process like this. Laura, are you ready to show us a video?
You bet.
Say Laura, I mean, as long as there's no audio on the video, do you want to explain a little bit about our videographer? And how that process can work?
Yeah, so we have an in-house videographer. His name's Dan Mowen and him and I work well together. Oftentimes what we do is we'll collect obviously photos that's provided from the school. Use that kind of in-between. But what's been working really well lately is we'll interview the teacher, the superintendent, maybe a parent. Because they're the people that are experiencing things firsthand and kind of know what the need is. And they'll give a little bit of a testimonial. So we would come to the school, do an interview. They'll talk a little bit. Maybe we have three or four people on camera. And then this information is just kind of filled in between. This video was a little bit different. They just didn't have anybody that they wanted to speak to on camera. And then towards the end of the referendum, we ended up doing an on-camera one because they saw how impactful these videos can be. Because it's just another touch point, another messaging touch point that you're not having to go online and read. You can just see it really easily laid out within a video. And these are easy to pull together and then push out via the website, social media. You can send them in an email. So there's a lot of different opportunities with it. And like I said, we do it all in-house and it's a pretty smooth process. And we've seen success with.
You had a question earlier on, on the, the kind of projects and everything else there that you're, that we're planning or proposing for your school district. While I was in Fairbolt, these projects, it brought back a lot of memories on these projects. ISG helped me with a $15 million bond. Third of it was HVAC upgrades and a third of it was roofing. And the third, another third was exterior building repairs. It was in a track repair and all that kind of stuff, but it was all different ages of buildings. You're wondering, you know, different ages of buildings. I had 10 buildings that we actually touched on and it was several, three summers, I think, while we did all the work. And same people are at ISG that worked on my project. So I came to ISG two and a half, almost three years ago now. But it brought back a lot of memories that this is kind of the same stuff I did in Fairbolt with ISG.
I have a question. I'm curious about how the drone flyovers work, I guess. Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Yeah, so the same actual person, Dan Mowen on our team, who's our videographer. He has his drone pilot's license and he can come to the school and capture footage. Yeah, so he'll come directly to the school. He captures footage. And how we use that footage is kind of just to supplement, whether it's in a video, if it's to show, hey, we need repairs on this athletic facility right here. And you can see the crack in the foundation from, you know, this vantage point. So it's, it's really to supplement other pieces, but it's like I said, pretty seamless, same type of process where we just come to the school directly.
Okay, thanks. So it's not going to be drones. They're not going to be flying to the, the students' houses or anything like that or the parents' house?
You know, we, we haven't done that, but I'm open for new ideas. That's for sure. Drop packages off.
I thought you were going to ask if the school board members get to fly the drone.
Oh yeah, that'd be fun too.
Other questions for these folks? Anything else ISG you'd like to add?
Well, no, just, just thank you. And, you know, we've enjoyed being a part of, a part of the team thus far and look forward to the future. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Laura, can you stop your chair? Because I don't know if I can do that. I'll go back to my chair. Now, our next group is Kraus Anderson, who's in the waiting room. So I will start letting them in. I believe all the ISG people are out. Yep. And then I'll start letting those gays in. Representatives from Kraus Anderson, Gary Benson, Tony Scholander and Andy Johnson. Are you guys able to hear me?
We sure are. Good evening.
Great. Well, welcome to the Cannon Falls Board Meeting. And we are looking forward to a pre-refereendum presentation by you guys. And I think, I'm not sure who's running it on your end, but I believe you should be able to share your own video. I know this is, you'd sent me this as a backup, but if you wish to run it at your own pace, you can, should be able to share it in one of the three dots up there to share your screen or maybe down below on it.
Okay. Start screen share. Let's see, this will stop others' screen sharing. Do you want to continue? I think I hit yes, correct?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
There we go.
Very good.
Good. Tony's got control.
Very good. All right. Jeff, are we ready?
Yep, you guys can do a quick introduction of yourselves and go ahead.
Very good. Well, I'll begin. My name's Tony Scholander, Director of Project Planning and Development. Gary and I actually have the same title. However, I will be your referendum campaign manager. I have done that successfully over 100 times. And I get up every day and my main role is to help districts such as yourselves and advocacy committees pull together a communications plan, tell your story. And at the end of the day, turn out 50% plus one yes voters. I'm not a big fan of 50% plus one. I'm frankly more of a fan of swat a fly with a hammer. I don't want to kind of win and I don't think you kind of want to win either from a long-term perspective and so forth. That said, I will turn it over to Gary.
All right. Well, good evening, Gary Benson. And I've been at Kraus Anderson since 1989. And for the last 30 years, I've been focusing on K-12, mostly in project planning and development, but also project management. And I will be providing a leadership role to your project from now through the referendum and on through the project phase and supporting Andy and others as they come in along the way. And with that, I'd have Andy introduce himself.
Good evening, everybody. Andy Johnson. I'm the Preconstruction Services Manager and I'm out of the Rochester office. I've had the pleasure of working with many school districts in the southern Minnesota region over the last eight years with Kraus Anderson. But most importantly, got to work with Jeff Sampson at his last job down at Southland School Districts. We had a very successful project down there and was ecstatic when Jeff reached out and gave us the opportunity to, to meet with all of you tonight. So thank you very much and we look forward to presenting to you tonight.
All right. Next slide. So I, I know you want us to be focused tonight and conscious of time and we will be, I promise. But I just want to go through this slide real quickly, a little background on Kraus Anderson. We are still a family-owned company that's been around with 124-year history. And I was not a founding member, but I have been there quite a while. And we are highly ranked in education and K-12 construction in particular. We're proud of that. Proud of our repeat clients. And the other thing we want to point out with this slide, knowing that you're working with ISG as architects, we have worked with them very recently on a number of projects. We wanted to list those. And these are just recent ones. Red Wing Schools, Southland School District, of course. Fairmont, which votes tomorrow night. Maple River Schools, that's in bidding and construction. Wyndham Schools and St. Peter, a couple completed projects. And Pipestone Area Schools, which is in construction to open this coming fall. Next slide. This slide real quickly, all those gold stars are indicative of Kraus Anderson's experience. Just in southern Minnesota, this is all south of the metro areas, you can see. Without, of course, reading all the districts and towns, but it shows you a strong density of our practice in K-12 there. We know the marketplaces and we would, we think we would be an excellent partner for Cannon Falls Area Schools. As we move forward, I just want to say two things. We, we know you want us to focus on pre-ref and I guarantee that, that Tony and myself will focus on that for the majority of it. But we also want to touch at the very end of our presentation on our comprehensive construction management services, because we think it's important what we bring to you post referendum as well. And that's some of the time that Andy and I'll spend with you. But the, the bulk of our presentation will be moving ahead and, and showing you how we work our strategies and have had very strong successes in recent years with the referendum, both district campaign and community support. Tony, you want to take it away and get us going through your slides?
Sure do. Okay. Hopefully everybody can see what I've got pulled up on the screen there. So let's start out and develop. How do we, how do we take a prescribed process and customize it, completely tailor it to Cannon Falls? Well, I'm going to give you the punchline upfront based on what we know about past voter history and turnout and the number of parents. And to make a reasonably close estimate of the number of folks that are going to turn out and in what classification. You're going to need at the top there, the punchline at the end of the arrow tip there is you're going to need 176, a minimum of 176 non-parents to vote yes. So how do I come up with that? On the left slide of the calculation here, we know that these are all November elections is typically when Cannon Falls, when you've had your elections, your school board elections and operating referenda. What we know is that typically 40 to 60% of the voter turnout on a November general election is what you can reasonably expect in a May or a non-general, non-primary type election. So based on that, there's a good likelihood that you're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,200 folks showing up and casting ballots on the bond referendum in May. What that would say is that based on that, you need 50% plus one or What that would say is that based on that, you need 50% plus one or just over 1,100 yes votes in order to win. When I look at the other side of the balance sheet and I look at the number of parents you've got, without your staff and your daycare parents, you've got just under 1,900 parents. If we can inform and educate roughly 70% of those parents, that means we're going to inform and educate roughly 1,300 of your parents. And if we can turn out 70% of those parents that we've informed, that means you're going to have about 925 parents voting yes. When I compare the right side to the left side, aha, that's where we come up with 176. What we know about a typical electorate is that it's comprised of about 75% non-parents. And of the remaining 25% of parents, what we know is that at best, you're going to see roughly 30% of those parents showing up and that's without a concerted effort in order to turn them out. Parents are the most supportive voters, but they're just terrible frankly at turning out and voting and the worst ones are the daycare ones, the daycare parents, because they are so busy, like we all were, raising young kids. And so how do we put a concerted effort together to maximize the folks that have a vested interest in voting yes when also putting together something that would help a non-parent come up with a selfish reason to support you on this? So in terms of campaign steps, the first two steps, and by the way, Kraus Anderson works with you as a district on steps one and two, I'm going to show you some examples of the work product that we've put out. And the first two steps are messaging and informing and we take those key critical reasons why people should support you. What is that compelling reason that you are asking your electorate to reach into their wallets and financially support you in this endeavor? And so what I do is I personally will write most of your content as it relates to your general brochures and so forth and the deep dives into each of those areas. What we then do in step two is we leverage the data you got from Sue Peterson at School Perceptions and we tailor an information, information strategy or put it into the right news outlets so that whether it's social media, the newspaper, the mail, the district website, whatever vehicle that is, we'll make sure that message gets out to your parents and to your non-parents. And so steps three and four are really outside of the district because you cannot obviously advocate and promote a referendum. Obviously, as you know, you can only inform and educate your electorate. So the separate group that we will work with, that we typically help you to form is a advocacy group and their goal ultimately is to defeat apathy. I always tell groups, it's not no voting groups that defeat referendums, it's actually apathy is that people all thought, well gee, I thought everybody else is going to show up. And again, I get real involved in this process, a lot of handholding. I'm going to spend a lot, a lot of time in Cannon Falls, not only with Jeff and your, your board there, you all, but I will also spend a lot of time with your advocacy group. And step three with your advocacy group kind of goes like this, it's generally a phone call and what we know is that most people don't have landlines anymore. So I go out and purchase a commercially available database with cellphone numbers and we get ahold of everybody in your community after the facts have been put out there in the newspaper and the brochures that we've written. And we essentially say, hi, my name's Tony, I'm a volunteer with the Our Kids, Our Community Committee, Our Kids, Our Community, Our Future Committee here in Cannon Falls. I'm calling to find out if you got the information about the bond referendum and, oh, good, you did, great. Would you be willing to tell me how you plan to vote? We take that information, we set the nos and the undecideds aside and we focus all of our efforts on the yes voters. It's not a persuasive campaign. You simply don't have time for nice and important. All you have time for is critical and critical is to turn out confirmed yes voters. And so that's essentially step three, step four is reminding them either to vote early up to 46 days prior to the election or on Election Day. And so I'm going to, for time reasons, I'm going to scoot over the next slide here. Here are some examples however of messaging, whether it's safety and security or tired HVAC systems that have outlived their useful lives or career in tech ed and more hands-on learning and so forth. But again, not going to get into that in too much detail, just for time's sake, we can come back to it if you'd like. Looking at the tax impact, this is something that we worked with Ellers, your financial advisors on, and it is simply taking the calculated tax impact for the average residential home and working with Ellers to make sure that we've got the right information. Nothing worse to shoot anybody's credibility than putting information out that's not correct. So we want to make sure that when we look at that tax impact for, for a homestead residential, we want to make sure that if the average home that is typically 115, excuse me, the average homeowner with a household income of less than $115,000 per year, if they are at $115,000 a year, they're able to apply for a tax refund and it's significant. In the case of White Bear, which I worked on, it took my mother-in-law's $23 a month payment and brought it down to about seven. So we'll work with Ellers on that. We'll also put together kiosk boards that sit at the entrance to your building so when mom and dad come in for extracurriculars and so forth, they see what are the challenges, what are the solutions? And we make sure and hand them something that says where to go and vote. This is an example of, you know, obviously, we're working with ISG on Fairmont. This is an example of where ISG provided the image on the lower right-hand corner of the brochure that we've got here. And then I created the content, my graphics department created the graphics other than the imagery and ISG, we've talked with those folks and they are, they, we've basically agreed that if we're working on this together, that they would provide the imagery in the sense of two-dimensional drawings, three-dimensional drawings, as well as they have in-house videography that we can leverage to tell your story. And this was how are we changing the way we deliver education within each of those learning spaces here? And so again, we can come back to that if you'd like. This is a piece where within a week or two after the general brochure goes out, we put something out with a couple hundred names of the most influential key shapers of opinion in your community that will support the referendum. So as part of the advocacy committee, we moved heaven and earth to get as many influential names on this. We put out a postcard and we mailed it to everybody in the community. And on the other side, it basically says, look at all of the information there that the, the district put out and what is it going to look like in terms of benefits from an educational adequacy from a tired billing systems that have outlived their useful lives or safety and security or capacity, whatever the need is. But we're mirroring the messaging that we've said in the general brochure. Here's a piece that we can put together that targets your non-parents, basically does a break-even analysis of what an increase in taxes per year and comparing that to the increased value in your home as a result of this bond referendum. What we know is that Harvard did a study in 2010 that said, for any project like this that you're doing, you have essentially increased the value of your home on average by 6%. So an average, let's say $100,000 home prior to the referendum is now $106,000 home. For every $100,000 worth of value, how many years does it take in increased taxes to equal $6,000? The punchline here is for grandparents and senior citizens who are on a fixed income, actually, you can't afford not to support this. And so again, that's put together by the advocacy group. Identify in our mind, I talked about what that looks like. What we also know is that, as I said earlier, you've got a minority of parents that are going to vote sadly. What we do is move heaven and earth to change that. This is kind of what I affectionately call the parent guilt piece and we basically say to parents, did you know that nearly, in this case on Pipestone, again, project we worked with ISG on, did you know that 40% of the parents were not even registered to vote? It was a similar situation when I worked up at Jordan. And so again, we basically put it out there and share with the parents, if we're going to pass this, we need your help. I put together a timeline that pulls together what needs to happen on the district's side of the equation as well as the advocacy committee's side. And this is basically a roadmap that gives direction to the whole process on both sides, again, the district and the advocacy committee.
All right. Thanks, Tony. Well, we're almost done wrapping it up here. I know you want us to time-wise and all we want to do is, Tony, and is Andy and I'd just like to tuck, touch real quickly on our construction phase and construction management services. This slide is only to show you, we know that a component of your project is the career and tech enhancements and we've got a number of recent project history in those types of areas for you to consider. We're very experienced in that area. The Fairmont vote tomorrow is all about that, as you probably have heard from, from Justin and from ISG. Moving to the next slide, where I want Andy to chime in a little bit now is to give you an overview of our construction management approach because we're, we're in it all the way with you guys and we think you should know a bit about our services in each of those phases. Tony, can you move it forward? All right. We've already talked through pre-refundum and maybe Andy, if you could just take a minute and a half or so and hit the highlights of the pre-construction, bidding, award phase and on through construction, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, so like, like Gary said earlier, wanted to talk to you about pre-refundum, but we felt it very important to talk about what happens after you're, you have a successful referendum in May and that starts immediately after the successful vote. A very core group of people from Cannon Falls, we, we begin working with that group, we begin working with the design professionals and that pre-construction phase kicks off. The pre-construction phase, which in a lot of times gets overlooked by groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings, but it, in our view, is the most critical phase that sets up a successful project. That pre-construction phase looks a lot like this. So we will establish and maintain budget estimates for you throughout all of the design phases. And what we're doing is we're looking at your project and we're providing estimates at a very granular level. And what that's doing is informing you and allowing you, you and your group to make educated decisions well in advance of when you actually go out to bid. And that's important because in today's world especially, this pandemic, the construction industry has not been immune to it. And there has been extreme volatilities in that. And Kraus Anderson is one company that's had the opportunity to bid multiple projects during this pandemic. We've been able to gather a significant amount of data to see how those trends are going. What we're going to do is going to continue to monitor that as we go along in this process during that design phase to give you those, those informed decisions and make those right, right decisions. Above and beyond costs, we're also evaluating the project schedule. We're identifying the opportunities to maximize that schedule, maximize your funds. We're also laying out the groundwork for how the phase of the construction process works. And then we're also keeping at the forefront of everyone's mind, the safety of the student and faculty and how you implement construction activities in an existing facility. Once you get to the bidding and award phase, an incredibly crucial phase because everybody knows the day you go out for bid, you want a successful bid day. And we pride ourselves that during those early stages of pre-construction, we're establishing very accurate budgets so that you can be assured that when it comes to the award, the bidding and award phase, there is no surprises for you. And we're going to maximize the opportunities for subcontractors, both in the local markets and the surrounding local markets. And a couple of recent success stories during the pandemic here. Maple River Schools, we turned out, just like Tony talks about turning out voters, we turn out contractors to bid on your work. We turned out over 180 subcontractors on Maple River Schools to bid on that project. That was a $41 million project. And then also just recently, Fairmont, for the city of Fairmont, turned out 150, 50 bidders, excuse me, on a $7 million project. So we pride ourselves on making your project attractive to the subcontracting community and we tailor those work scopes to also lend itself to any local participation, any local contractors that the Cannon Falls area has. We want to make sure that they feel included and that they feel like they have an opportunity to work on a project that they, they support financially too. During construction phase, Kraus Anderson brings forth years and years of expertise working in K-12 facilities, working in facilities that have students and faculty also in the facility while you're, while you're working on it. We feel it very necessary that you have a strong communication pipeline and that starts for, first and foremost with onsite superintendent. Kraus Anderson provides an onsite superintendent every day, Monday through Friday, all day, every day. And that is going to be an extension of Cannon Falls School District. He's going to be representing, he or she's going to be representing Cannon Falls day in and day out out there and he's going to make sure that he's making the right decisions on behalf of the Cannon Falls School District. And that communication will continue from the very beginning to the very end. And as we go through post-construction, it's not, here's the keys, you know, see you later, thanks for, thanks for hiring us. We feel it necessary to be a partner for you after we turn over the keys and we're a part, a valued partner as we implement that, what post-construction looks like. Make sure your folks feel comfortable taking over the facility. We work you through that first warranty year that comes with construction. Make sure all the, you know, everything's working in fine order. And then we're always, we're always a call away when you need some help on, and anything further. And I think what was important to note that we, we haven't really touched on, I did mention I'm from the Rochester office. We would fully intend to service this project from the Rochester office. So we're only a short drive away to, to help you out with anything that you may have.
Well, with that, I would wrap up our presentation with this last slide and say, this kind of depicts how we approach K-12 as a construction manager. Very much, as you can see, our experience and comprehensive capabilities balance with your architect and yourselves in a collaborative manner. We think it brings a more successful project if we're involved in the pre-construction design phase, not to mention, of course, the referendum part of it. But you'll find us a very collaborative partner, very proactive and bring you a successful project. With that, YK, and what might be your questions for us?
One thing I want to make sure and include is the fact that what Andy talked about going out for bids, 100% of your project will be competitively bid. So we're your advocate. You're basically bringing us on board at the end of, or excuse me, prior to the project getting going under construction or your partner from that funding phase all the way through the closeout phase. And again, it's all 100% competitively bid. Happy to take any of your questions as it relates to frankly, anything. We're wide open. So hand it back to you, Jeff.
Thank you. Any questions from board members to the K-A presenters tonight?
Seems like for the most part, you know, this is a supply and demand type of industry that you're in. And the materials costs and such that we're faced with right now, are we at an all time high? And is the cost of this project going to be higher than what we would estimate just due to supply?
Well, I'll start. Interestingly enough, today we got a memo from our our in-house pre-con department that tracks indexing and and pricing. And they've gotten some pricing information back from steel suppliers. Yes, structural steel is going up. Some of the costs of things such as tube steel material, although the architects can avoid using that if we can encourage them to. But rebar and even precast, then there's items like precast that may not be going up, but they may be getting delayed. It's things are getting further and further out due to the demand. Drywall, metal studs, lumber, those are all getting stressed out because of the housing market. And there's some lead time issues on those. But we continue to track those. The other thing that I would say is, yes, some of those costs and those commodity items are going up. But interestingly enough, so far now bids are bids are going the other direction. It's kind of a crazy world for right now, as as Andy just described. I mean, the the Maple River bids were fifteen to twenty percent under across the board, even with rising costs. So it's it's a volatile market, but we'd keep an eye on that. And one of the first things we do in coming on board, of course, is dive into your budgeting and and what's been put together and work with ISG to get a good understanding of it in yourselves. And make sure we're we're aligning the numbers with what's real out there and what's going to be real in the months ahead.
And Bob, I'll just couple that I'll just finish that that last little thought there. What we do is we work very diligently with the design team right out of the gate as soon as the referendums passed. And we start to identify and we always keep our pulse on what the market's doing. So if a market's telling us that a particular product type is volatile, we try to make sure that we're aligning the project to go to go a different direction, that that would be more beneficial to maximize your funds. And then also, just as Gary said, it's a it's a very unique time. There is certain aspects, certain materials that have seen its peak and 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 we're seeing all time record pricing. But we have not seen that from the labor perspective. There is a lot of hungry contractors out there that have made our participation levels in the bidding environment at an all time high. So it's it's a really unique time, but it's important that you have a partner with you that has a pulse on that and can continue to give a pulse on that, that can educate and give you the information you need to to make those decisions.
Would you ever anticipate that the supply would would delay our needs?
So I guess, you know, from that perspective, usually what happens, Bob, is there's going to be a fairly lengthy design process for any project that passes a referendum process. You start the design process, which can go anywhere from six to nine months, depending on what the project is. So there's a lot that can change in that in that process when it comes to supply and demand and production durations. And we can make those decisions. And and what we do sometimes, when we when we identify an issue with a particular product that we need for a project, is we isolate that product and we we would procure it ahead of schedule to make sure that it times out with the overall construction project. So we look for we look for opportunities to maximize and 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 not make it an issue, make it a make it an opportunity to utilize funds early and and alleviate any kind of production or schedule issues.
Thank you, Andy.
Yep.
Team, do you have any questions for the Kraus people? Jeff, I'll turn it back to you.
Great. Well, I will be in touch with you guys at some point in the near future to talk about the the interview tonight. Free referendum services. And then if whoever shared their screen could stop that share so I can grab back that power. But I think I don't know if I can override you here or not.
Yeah, here, just a second. How's that?
There we go.
All right.
Sounds great unless you guys.
Can I can I make one closing statement?
Yeah.
All right, great. And and you know, here's here's in terms of, I want to make sure you're you're completely comfortable with and have been well informed with regard to our basis of compensation. And essentially, whenever we work on a project, our fees to provide construction management are two percent. Whether you go to Red Wing, Fairmont, Maple River, Wyndham, Pipestone, Maple Canton, our fee is two percent. And that's just it's what we do. And what we have agreed to with Jeff, because he, you know, he he basically said, you know, we're we've worked with Jeff, we know Jeff frankly. And what we said to Jeff was that we would be willing to forego the cost of the referendum campaign services that we normally charge to give you a sense for the for the cost that we'll invest in that. We will invest a minimum of twenty five thousand dollars in your project of my time and my staff's time. And we're not going to defer that until you get your money. We're simply not going to charge you for that. So from a business decision standpoint, why would we do that? We're doing that essentially, again, the relationship is already there with Jeff. We also know that if you invest in us, we will invest in you. And essentially, our track record of eighty nine percent of our bond referendums passing on the first go is such that, you know, we'll take that bet any day of the week. Frankly, we were that confident that we're able to have a positive impact on this. We're very familiar with and experienced with having not only levy referendums for operating held on the same ballot as multiple ballot questions for bond referendums. I've worked on a number of those. And I think it it provides an opportunity for us to engage your staff even more because operating dollars obviously help district staff. And it can be argued, of course, that referendum dollars can as well. But the point of it all being is we're very comfortable with the assignment as we know it. And so our two percent fee is what it is wherever in any of those districts, as well as our staffing terms and conditions. They're they're just, it is what it is. And so if there was the chance, the ten percent chance that your referendum didn't pass, you would not be charged by Kraus Anderson. We would simply want to work with you for the next referendum. And again, you're not going to get a bill from K A. So we think it's a win win situation. We think that based on giddy up and go, you know, we've got a two of them that vote in April right now. And quite frankly, it it we started working on those a month and a half ago. So it might not sound like it, but May is not very far away, May eleventh. And so if you were to decide to bring us on board, we would hope it would be sooner rather than later, not for just self-serving reasons, but to pull together all of the deliverables and the volunteer hours and so forth. It's it's critical to giddy up. So greatly appreciate this opportunity. And hopefully you feel confident that you have no questions about our our basis of compensation. If you do, please feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions, we can have those guys step out.
Thank you very much.
Your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. All right, those guys are out now. Obviously, both companies did a little bit of extra marketing on their own behalf for architectural and construction management services. We are not engaged with anyone per se legally right now for any project. Yet again, as I mentioned before, you certainly can use both of these companies, but we can certainly bring in other companies to see what their products are like as well on both the architectural and construction management side. But right now, we're just talking pre referendum services.
And both. Question about would we be working with one architectural firm and one construction firm? Or can they both do the full project independently?
The way this works is that we would need to eventually hire or engage with more formally an architectural firm and a construction management firm. One of them does the 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 drawing and designing. And then the other one does the actual hammer and nails work part of it. And so that tonight was an example of each, I guess. I in full disclosure, I think I mentioned this before, but I have worked with both of them in my last district that I was with. Very comfortable with them. They do great work. At the time, we interviewed down in Southland, ISG had a good product to sell and plus they were also the cheapest percentage wise for cost. And then Kraus Anderson, we brought in two other firms with Kraus Anderson and Kraus. Actually, all of them are right around that two percent, if not the same at two percent. And we we felt comfortable with Kraus's product that they presented for that night. So.
Dave Peterson, head of operations and maintenance, if he's still on, I just wonder if he had anything to to say on behalf of either one or recommendations?
No, I mean, this is, you know, pretty standard procedure for a project like this. Very good companies, very competent. And to be able to have a construction management involved early stages is definitely beneficial to the project. So it was a good presentation by both and really, like I said, standard procedure.
Have you been around both in your past life?
I have, yeah.
Okay.
I was wondering, are we planning on taking more bids or voting on this or this is just?
I think tonight is just, you know, did either one of those companies do anything for you as far as the pre referendum marketing services that they provide? And then I could work with either the facility committee and bring forth a recommendation for an architect and a construction manager. We could go through the interviews that they can, you know, at the committee level. If the board wishes to hear architectural interviews and C M interviews, we can certainly do them at a board level too. So I I think that's that's the next step in this is once we get the pre referendum services down so that we can start on that, we would look at engaging more formally with an architect and a construction management company.
So that'll be recommendation from the facilities committee?
If the board wants to go that route, the board wants to hear all the interviews.
I know. But one thing, he's right, I don't think we have a lot of time. So I do think it's, you know, would be good if we can get the decisions made as soon as possible.
Yeah, I I figured if we could formally engage with both an architect and a construction management company by the beginning of the March. Board meeting, that would be great. But for now, we do need to probably engage with the pre referendum services so that we can start that promoting information. And if, you know, if you choose one of these companies for pre referendum, pre referendum services, that doesn't mean that we're tied to them for architect or C M work. We just have to pay for their pre pre referendum work, which at this point, both of them said it would be free if we engage with them down the line. If they didn't, it's about roughly five thousand dollars or so. It's not a big cost to them as far as materials, but it does, you know, help the district out a little bit.
Anybody have any recommendations, more questions?
So I guess the question is like if we had, based upon the two like initial thoughts and reactions. Is that okay? Thank you. So I appreciated the Kate, the presentation by by Kraus Anderson in terms of, I think, the approach, like kind of that the the challenges apathy and the numbers kind of where they're sort of thinking that would work. That just really kind of stuck out to me in terms of, I think, just understanding the community and kind of where we're at. So I appreciated that, but I I do, I did really like some of the the actual kind of visuals and capabilities with ISG. But I don't know, I was just impressed by, I think, that the actual community focus of the presentation by K A.
Both of them have extensive experience working in pre referendum. So I don't think the board can go wrong with their choice.
So I I guess I'm a little, I was a little bit confused because a lot of what they said was we worked with ISG on this or we worked with K A on that. So are we just, we're looking to just hire one? Or if we decide that we're going to hire them both for architecture and construction management, would they then both provide us with pre referendum services at no charge?
I suppose they would.
And work together, so we have the benefit of what I think to to expand on what Rebecca was saying, I think, even just looking at their presentations, the graphic capabilities at ISG are are definitely advanced compared to what we saw from K A. But I appreciated the fact that K A shared their track record and they've obviously been doing it for a long time. And they will have someone physically here during that pre referendum process, which I think is is only going to benefit us. So I it would be very difficult to choose based on based on those two.
Well, one of the things that we could do, if you want to, if you don't want to choose anybody per se tonight, if you like them, you know, both working together, you could put them through the pieces of the, you know, we could go out right away and get a facility committee scheduled along and bring some companies in, some different architect companies, if you want to do the comparison and different C M companies to do comparisons. And then, you know, go from there. If you if you want to hire him to both work together, you know, you might be either doubling your cost, you know, if you if you don't hire both of them, I guess. So like I said, both of them have good experiences. And I do understand what you're saying there, Anna, that the that the graphics did look better on one side and the and maybe the data collection through K A was probably a good, good resource as well. And they and they've worked together on many different projects too, as well in other districts.
Yeah, I guess that's just where where the the disconnect was happening for me because they even mentioned in their presentation that they will get their their graphics from ISG, depending on what the project is.
I think he was assuming, if you looked at what I think the ISG had had their had their logo in that that diagram, but they had just the general construction management side of it. Not knowing who the construction manager was, they they know that we're talking with Kraus Anderson for pre referendum services. But for some reason, Kraus Anderson thinks we've already signed down with ISG. So I think that's just
Okay.
their own assumptions.
I think that just of what Anna was speaking to, I think when he said that they would use some of the images from ISG, it was for some of the renderings, what the project would look like. Not like digital or whatever, I mean, mark, you know, that. Sure. Yeah.
In the end, both the architect and the construction management company will have a vested interest in making sure that the project passes, obviously. And so though, no matter who that is on either side, they'll they'll work hand in hand with those companies. Because a lot of those companies will cross over. You know, ISG can work easily work with Knutson out of Rochester, which is another larger C M company. Or, you know, name your architect, Wendell or or whoever has worked with Kraus Anderson. So a lot of those companies cross over back and forth, depending on what project they're working with.
So Jeff, is it fair? So Jeff, is it fair to say that with the work that ISG is already done to bring in another architect would be, you know, kind of going backwards?
Yeah, you could, it's fair to say that, yeah.
Yeah. And so, so with that being said, then, you know, we hire an architect and at that point, then it's their responsibility to find a construction manager that they would be willing to work with. As you've mentioned, Knutson, Kraus Anderson, you know, there's a bevy of them that would then jump into the project, understand what it is. So that's not really a commitment that we really need to do at this point.
Not for, not for the CN yet, right?
Right. So in my perspective, uh, it kind of makes some sense to use ISG. They've done some of the legwork in the building already. You've worked with them. There's some positive comments around their, their technology and the presentation, so.
So am I hearing that you want to just engage with ISG? Is that kind of what you're?
Well, at this point, I think, you know, if you're looking for some traction to get things moving, I mean, it kind of makes some sense to use ISG. Otherwise, we're, we're going backwards and as noted by the presentation and, and, you know, the timeline is short here, so. Bill, are you making a motion that we would use pre referendum, the pre referendum company ISG? ISG, yes. You're making that motion? I would make that motion, yes. So we have a motion on the floor that we will use ISG as our pre referendum company. That's by Bill. We can certainly have some more discussion when we have our second here, if you'd like. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
A second, but so we can discuss more of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to, to use ISG in the pre referendum. Okay, just more discussion.
Well, for comparing costs, dude, so it's 2% of the amount of the referendum, or I guess I'm not following that.
Oh, yeah, they got a little bit too far into the weeds tonight for this discussion. The pre referendum work is, you know, roughly $5,000 depending on how much we want to, to spend and send out. But they're, they're big, they're not so worried about the cost of the pre referendum work because they want to get engaged with the big project. And when it passes, when Kraus says that their cost is 2%, they're talking about, that means that we are engaged with them as a construction manager and that 2% is based solely on the construction materials for the project. And so, you know, of the, what is it, $12.7 million total project? Half or two thirds of that is going to be construction materials, let's say. And then the 2% is based off of that. And so the, the 2% isn't, has nothing to do with the pre referendum cost whatsoever. They went too far in the weeds on that.
Yes.
And then, uh, as an example, ISG's costs, uh, there, there's a lot more. Kraus Anderson does the construction management, so they, they do have some work, level of work, but ISG is going to do the bulk of the design drawings, engineering work and everything else. And their, their percentage cost is going to be around that six and a half percent. And that's actually what they bid in Southland, and that was the cheaper of the architects. Architects can get up around the seven, eight, nine percent cost range of the total project. So, but again, that has nothing to do with the pre referendum cost at all. That is their actual, if they are engaged with you formally, that is their cost percentage wise.
Katie, you've been kind of quiet on this. Do you have any two cents worth? Overwhelming information.
I was in very much agreement with Rebecca and, and Anna here, and they pretty much said what I was thinking too, or I really liked different parts of both of the presentations. I was very impressed with the, with the video, especially right now. I just feel like the visual, the more visuals that we can give people and the more things that we can get out to people to see what we're looking at doing and being able to do it from the comfort of their home. For one, for safety of being at home and, and just being able to, to really get out the information. I, I was, I was very impressed with the, the video and just being able to send those types of things out to the majority of our people. So, so yeah, no, that's kind of where I was thinking.
Well, I think that the, the comment around the Kraus Anderson, knowing the community and the voting, that, that's really what we've already done with school perceptions. So if you go back and review that, we know where we're at pretty much from the standpoint of the community and what we need to do in order to make this work. So that, that to me didn't make any difference as far as the presentation. So I'm kind of looking at this as, okay, where are we at today? Where do we need to be at tomorrow? And ISG's done the work already. They know the project that we're looking to get into. And there was comments around the, the presentation that liked the digital, the information, the abilities for them. So that's why, why I made the motion.
Say that, I'll say that ISG's stuff looks great, but we also have to think about who we need to attract. And based on the information that Kraus Anderson gave us, with them being non-parents, if we think about the non-parents in our community, they're not people that are going to be interested in technology or doing a 365 digital walkthrough. There are people that want hard facts on paper, or they want to talk directly to someone. And based on what K told us, that's what they do. I think ISG stuff looks great. If we were in a different market, I would maybe feel differently, but I think a more nuts and bolts approach for, for the, the people that we're trying to attract, K might be a better fit for us. And, and they can break it down with how they know what they're doing. They have the track record and I, I didn't see that from, from ISG and how successful their pre referendum actions are.
That is a very good point, Anna.
Yeah, I, and I come from a little bit different area. I, I respect, I respect what you have to say, but I think Bill is correct. We hired school perceptions for a reason. They gave us, they gave us a lot of good information and the dynamic of the potential of voters and different voters. Rebecca.
Great. That's not what I'm talking about.
That's not what, what Anna was saying. I, I, I feel like we, we, we have the data from school perceptions, right? In order to inform the feasibility of this. I, I think that what Kraus Anderson did was take that data and build an actual pre referendum campaign around that sort of saying, based upon this, here's what we think the message is, and here's what we know works from our track record. And I think one of the things that I found really compelling was the idea of that using the community's voice to show support for that and like the list of those names, like there were so many clear strategies that I think, thinking about our community and that idea that we really need 176 non-parents to vote. Like that's what's going to sell, that's what's going to sell that. I was also impressed with the idea too about, you know, like the previous examples of showing and pushing pre, you know, early voting, you know, like what's the message for when you have to be registered to vote and when do we do that timeline? And I think my struggle is that the flip side of that, what we saw from ISG and not to take away from anything that they've done was this kind of a big emphasis on here's this video, but what's that message and what's the tie in for our community? Yeah, I didn't see a drill down from them. They talked about all the things that we could do where Kraus Anderson had already taken that step and said, this is what we think you should do. So we got a bunch of potential strategies and potential, like what we're, ISG is saying that we still, they, a survey was part of their process too. And then we need to figure out who your target market is. K already told us that. We, we already know who that is.
Well, if you, you go back to school perceptions, the, the survey, it was non-parents. And it was understood that that was the question. You know, you, you have your staff, you have your, your parents that will vote in support of this and the non-parents are the question. So I don't think this is something that's new. I think what we're looking at is.
Hold on.
Well, but, but I think that's where the conversation's going. Well, if, if we're just looking at a slide for 176 non-parents, I think we're missing the mark. I think what ISG has is the ability, and yeah, they didn't splash 89% up on the, on the screen. They've done this. They've been successful. They've done it with Southland that Jeff has worked with them previously. So I don't think that's the question. It's what we're going to want from them. We're going to tell them what we want. And from school perceptions, one of the biggest things, and I shared this with Bob, is, you know, the non-parents want to hear from us in the beacon. So how do we do that? Did either of them make a presentation about using the local newspaper? No, but we know that from school perceptions. So we have to use the tool that was, we spent money for. Not one slide.
Okay.
You know, we can't go wrong with either one of these folks. They both made really good presentations to us. This is the, our preliminary look at, um, at the referendum and the path it's going to take, the pre referendum. We have a motion and a second on the floor for ISG to be our pre referendum company. Let's take a vote on this and see where it goes. I think we've had some good conversation. So a yes vote would be for ISG to be our pre referendum company.
Before, before we vote though, can I just say, I mean, it does seem like it, seems like it makes a lot of sense to work with ISG for the front end and then Kraus Anderson as a construction company. So we could still work with both and they could collaborate on everything.
Yep.
You know, and I was going to say, part of this conversation, and we'll get started with maybe rolling out interviews for both an architect and CM company with the facility committee. But yeah, you're right, Brenda. I think no matter which way you go here, if you end up hiring them both to do architectural and CM work, then you get that, the benefit of both of those companies doing that, basically doing the same job. And both ISG and Kraus said, you know, no matter whether we're hired or not, we're still, we're still going to be involved if we're hired to do the, the big project in the end. So it's not like they're not going to be involved if they're end up being chosen.
Good point. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve ISG to be the pre referendum company. A yes vote would be for ISG. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Katie?
No.
Bill? Yes. Rebecca?
No.
Well.
I'm jury.
I'm jury. We have those from time to time, not very often though. Would someone like to make a recommendation for our pre referendum company being other than ISG?
Are you looking for a motion or?
I am. Yes, I am.
I, I will make a motion that we use Kraus Anderson for pre referendum work.
Anna?
I'll second.
Who is the second? I'm sorry.
Rebecca.
Motion by Anna, seconded by Rebecca to use Kraus Anderson as our pre referendum company. Other discussion.
So I, I want to. Just a motion.
Go ahead.
I want to be, I want to be clear that I'm not, it's not just that one slide about the parents and it's not just the 89% success rate. Those are two key things, but it's not just that. From a professional marketing standpoint, I think that the tactics that Kraus Anderson shared with us are a good fit for what we're trying to accomplish. Like Rebecca mentioned, that, that postcard that has everybody that's already in support, something like that in our community is going to be very valuable. And that was not something that we saw from ISG. Um, as far as, as far as getting information in the beacon, I think that's pretty much a given, just because they didn't specifically call it out, doesn't mean that we're not going to use that because we did learn from the survey and just in general, that that's how our community gets their information. If they don't have a tie directly to the school.
Was on one of the slides. It was when he was talking about identify.
Okay. So I, I, this isn't just two specific slides, it's just a general feeling like they understand our market, also keeping in mind that their focus is on Southern Minnesota and they've worked with a significant number of districts in this area, so they know what voters outside of the metro are, are looking for. And I'm not saying that ISG doesn't. But I just, the, the local presence and past projects in this particular area is also a benefit or pro in the column for Kraus Anderson, for me.
Yep. I think they've had extensive work in rural Minnesota and throughout, so. Okay, anyone else like to throw in something? We'll vote if not.
Is that something we have to vote on tonight or can, was it, can that be, I guess I feel like I don't really understand the costs involved and if we work with one versus the other, like we work with Kraus Anderson for the pre ref and then if we used the ISP for the architecture and then went back to Kraus Anderson for the construction, how does that affect the whole, the costs?
Both companies are, are charging roughly $5,000. And and again, that's not either company's main focus. They want to be involved with the larger piece. And so if, if we, no matter who we engage with, I think we can't go wrong. I mean, whoever the board's preferences, Kraus Anderson got really good reviews from, we didn't use them for pre referendum down in, in Southland, but they came in later. And they still did a, a good job of helping the company along or helping ISG in the process. Cause ISG, we, we had to go, we failed the first referendum down there and we went back out again and ISG was involved with us the whole time. And so they knew the backstory. Kraus Anderson, I got great reviews from area superintendents. I've gotten great reviews on ISG from area superintendents too. So again, we can't go wrong. Kraus Anderson probably does have more of that pre referendum experience that you're talking about. And so it, it depends on what it comes down to. And I, I can tell you that if you, if you pick Kraus Anderson to do the pre referendum, you know, they're going to do a great job. And if you want to interview other pre referendum companies, you can certainly do that, but you don't have to in this case because there's nothing holding you to interviewing. If you want to pick Kraus Anderson to do the construction work, that's fine. And same thing with I, you know, ISG to go ahead and, you know, I can get a quote from them, from their architectural services and we can move forward with them. That's fine. I, I just thought you might want to go through some sort of an interview process for both the architect and the construction management, just to get some different thoughts on the companies that you guys are going to be engaging with if this passes. This is options, so.
Again, this is, it's certainly not our biggest piece and both of them will be good at what they do. Jeff has worked with both and we've all, well, there, there's been a background with both of that in our, in our schools in the past.
Yeah, I worked with one person from each team that presented tonight down in Southland. I worked with Andy Johnson, who was from Kraus Anderson. The younger kid that was, he had these, you know, mid to upper 30s. He just looks really young. And then I G I worked with their engineer, Justin Steffel. On the project down there and and they're both, they're all good people. They and they truly help and they wanna do what's best for each district that they work with.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to use. Kraus Anderson as our pre referendum company. A yes vote would be for Kraus Anderson as that company. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes. Sorry, anyway.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill? Rebecca?
Yes.
So Kraus Anderson will be our pre referendum folks. And again, this is just a small piece to that puzzle. But it gets us moving in in a forward direction rather than start pulling others in for. Pre referendum. So that vote for Kraus Anderson is five to one. Okay. Good conversation from all. Thank you. And good presentations by both of these companies. That was a hard one. Number four, consideration to approve the updates to the twenty twenty one list of fundraising opportunities.
Yes, due to us being in a COVID year, normally you do this for one time throughout the for the entire year. But we've had to have some sports and clubs rethink their fundraising opportunities. And so we're asking you to approve this updated list tonight.
Any other input read?
Actually, it's just baseball. All the other ones you already voted on.
Can you show the agenda on the screen? We're still seeing that.
I'm sorry.
Baseball one, we we did some renaming initially when we did this in the fall. It said fall fundraising and since we, many of our programs are opting not to do anything because of COVID and virtual only non contact. We just added baseball to it and we just took it to the fundraiser. So baseball is the only one. And it's replacing the bomber cars that they have done in years past. And so there it's a virtual campaign only that they're gonna send a link just asking for some donations for their account.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve the up. Update of the twenty twenty one fundraising.
I'll make a motion.
The motion. Go ahead, Katie.
Katie on one. And who has second?
That's Anna.
Anna, thank you. We have a motion, a second. To approve the fundraising updates shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve a leave of absence in accordance with the master agreement under article. Ten, one twenty two eight point four six for the upcoming school year.
And this is for Joyce Sersker and I recommend approval.
Haven't we approved all three of these in the past for their durations?
For two of them, but they always have the option to come back. So I'm kinda stuck in that limbo of. You know, they've they've told me again at the end of each year that they're not gonna come back for the following year. I suppose technically we could say, well, it's for three years anyway, but they always have the option to come back after. Year one. It's just kind of a weird situation. So I thought I'd throw it out there and say, please approve this again.
Sure. Get a motion to approve.
No, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Bill? Brenda on the second, a yes vote would be for. The continuance of a leave of absence. Would that be correct, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, yes vote would be for the continuance. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Same thing for the next one. Consideration to approve a leave of absence in according with the in accordance with the master agreement under article ten. One twenty two eight point forty six upcoming school year.
And this one's for Joel Russtead. And I recommend approval.
Okay. Team, who makes the motion?
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Anna wins that.
Yep.
And Katie is in second.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. This would be for the approval of the continuance leave of absence for Joel Russtead. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the vaccination. Dispensing site cooperative agreement with Goodview County.
This was initially on the last month's board agenda, but there were some changes that were made to it. So initially we had to pull that off and bring it back to this. Board meeting and they have settled on the fieldhouse as their site. Moving forward, it is a standard county five year agreement and it's only for. Vaccinations. So. You know, hopefully we don't have any more pandemics after we get done here. That would take up the next five years. But that is what they're requesting their usage and they're very flexible. And you know, if we if we can't use the fieldhouse that day, then we just need to provide another area, which I think we got plenty of space for, so.
Okay. And your recommendation, you say?
Yeah, I'd recommend approving.
Okay. We have a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve.
Katie?
And Katie on the second?
Yep.
Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the vaccination dispensing site being at the fieldhouse. Or sites, other sites as needed. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve two bus leases.
We recently met in a transportation committee and maybe Rebecca can talk a little bit about this, but basically the outcome. Of it was the need to lease. Two buses for this coming year.
Anything to add, Rebecca?
No, just the the conversation was how to kinda continue to maintain a quality fleet. And it seems like leasing is a good option for us. So.
And that would be your recommendation coming out of that.
Would be my recommendation coming out of that meeting.
Okay. All right, I would look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Rebecca on the motion, a second?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Other discussion?
I had a question. I I thought from the. Presentation last year that we were looking to work our way back to having our own fleet. So where we're going with these two two new leases?
Yeah, maybe Josh can touch on that a little bit. About the reasoning of where we are at with that. Yep, so you know, there're labeled leases and in essence, they're not like your typical. Personal lease for a vehicle or you turn it at the end of it. While it is labeled the lease, it is a purchase for the vehicle. After five years, we're on the buses. So all the buses that we have are currently the district's buses and our fleet. There was discussion at some time of trying to switch over to purchasing outright the bus versus leasing the buses to maybe save some. Financing cost. The issue being is, as you see here, in order to keep our fleet current, we're averaging roughly about fifteen years to turnover a bus. We have to, we have so many buses on lease currently. We need to add an additional about one hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars to our budget for transportation. To start that cycle over towards purchasing. When you drill down on the lease for this bus. The cost of the vehicles have gone up. It used to be about eighty thousand dollars. Our last bus prior to this was about ninety thousand. The quote on this, again, under state contract, so it's as good a price as we're gonna get. In the view of ninety seven thousand dollars and part of it is the cost of steel, the demand on the bus and the lead time it is to order the buses. But we just don't have twenty thousand dollars in our current budget to add to start towards that purchase part. The lease payments on these each will be about twenty thousand dollars apiece for five years. I think ideally we'd like to get to where we're purchasing the bus, maybe some better flexibility for our district in order to get that switched over from a lease. Model which we are currently in to a purchase model is gonna take quite a bit of time.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, I remember you saying that it was a, but when it just comes across as a lease.
Yeah, it's romantic. So if you're looking at your house, you know, you lease a vehicle and you only got so many miles you can put on it and you gotta turn it in at the end of it. These here is actually a purchase for the district.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion, the second on the floor to approve two bus leases. A yes vote before that approval. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna? Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the resolution from the American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. One twenty four D dash seven eight.
Yes, this is a yearly item that the board must consider. An act coming from the parent advisory group. I know Stephen. Is joined us and Bill is in that committee as well if they wish to speak to that.
Bill or Steven?
Yep. Can you guys hear me? Okay, this is Steven.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, like Jeff said, this is a yearly item that first needs to have a vote within the parent advisory committee. And then whether it's a vote of concurrence or non concurrence, it goes to the school board. So we've had approximately one meeting per month with the parent advisory committee. We're making progress on our goals that were approved by the school board and the parent advisory committee earlier in the year. Some materials are being purchased for pre kindergarten rooms on cultural inclusiveness. We had training for all teachers done on diversity and we're making progress on some other goals as well. So this vote right here, the parent advisory committee, two weeks ago, made a vote of concurrence that the district. Is basically providing the resources and the materials for the committee. And for students of American Indian backgrounds to have a good quality education.
Bill, you're the liaison here.
Yes, yeah, and and Stephen laid it out pretty well there. I think what. What the committee is really trying to do is develop these goals and implement them. And and I think that's what the vote of concurrence is about. And so I think as a whole, we've made good progress. Last year. I think we were. Probably. Three or four months in and then. The pandemic hit and things just kinda shut down. So I think we're we're really building on what we started last year. So I'm very happy and pleased with where we're going.
Thank you. We need a motion before a resolution. A second.
Yeah, let me pull up that resolution.
Yeah.
I've been falling behind on my duties of putting up the proper screen. I apologize tonight.
Okay, first we need a motion and a second. Does anyone wish to move on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie?
I'll second. Rebecca.
And Rebecca.
Guys, ready?
Any other discussion? Now we're ready.
All right. The American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. Whereas the school board or district has an AIPAC composed of parents guardians of American Indian children. Who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and professionals. American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming. And American Indian representatives from community. Whereas the school board or district affords the. IPAC, the necessary information and opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education. And the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools programs and programs. And whereas the AIPAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian. Education program planning. And whereas the AIPAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian students. Therefore, be it resolved that the AIPAC occurs. Concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota statute section. One two four D dash seven eight and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. All right, so Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Sorry, yes.
That's okay. Katie, yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Next on the agenda. For you folks that have joined us in the open session, we will now go into a closed session and. And all of us will be taken off and the board members will come back in with their own Zoom ID as I. I think I heard. So when we're finished with the closed session, which has to do with the mid year evaluation of the superintendent. The only thing left after that would be to close the open session after we reopen. So short thing going. People that are attending are are finished for the evening and we will go into closed session. I will now entertain a motion to to close our open meeting.
I'll make a motion, Katie.
You want here a second?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion. Again, we will close this for all and we will reenter with the with new Zoom credentials. Jeff, is that true?
Yep, if you look on your meeting agenda here, here's the link for the board members. And you'll be put into a waiting room like before. If I could request maybe a two minute break, that would be awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Got a motion, the second on the floor, yes vote would be to close the session. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. We'll see you in a couple of minutes.
All right, thank you.